Thank you.
I know.
Dan.
How about those backers?
Yeah, it wasn't looking good. I'll be honest. I was a lot worried. About they.
You know, I gotta wonder if Aaron Rodgers goes like.
No, they're coming on now, I think.
Last year, remember they won. All out there hating against me by one touchdown in the last.
What do you do? He's about your age, huh?
Yeah. Something like that. I think Brett Favre was more mighty.
No, it's our dog ran up and down, that's water. About twenty minutes walk there, but then it's got cool malls. A little bit bigger, a little bit taller. A little more dangerous, yeah.
Well, they probably want people to travel all over, they don't have. And another hour. It's something that we have to play.
I don't know if we ever saw. We can grab this one. We got those. Mark, we got.
Unless he changed his mind, but last night he said. I need to get this corner out.
You still playing golf after that?
Well.
Maybe not.
Everything town, so.
This seems like it's pretty late.
They actually, they had a closing party on Saturday night. But.
No frost on the grain.
You can sleep a little. No problem. Men's and women's nights are all kind of efficient. They're gonna have enough. On on Tuesday night for men's night, just whoever wants to come.
Correct. Sorry, I found yours there.
There's what if I spy.
Is that going to okay?
Oh, sure. It worked out.
Yeah. The.
Shut everything down. Put the fittings down.
I'm not sure what the key is, do you remember?
It should start with a C.
The.
C fifteen?
There you go. Drove the one of.
I was gonna bring it in Friday and forgot.
Oh, wow.
One.
Well, it's nine thirty. All those that so choose, please stand for the point of the week.
With the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of all the meeting to order, Vic is absent. Just as a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. If you choose not to be recorded, you have the option. First item on the agenda this morning is Steve Slusser and Ben Stevens from WinMed. Presentation of their annual financial report. Good morning, guys.
Morning. Also, Justin Goldson, born and trustee member with us as well this morning. Justin chairs our finance committee. All right, so happy to be back here and reviewing our financials from last year. Ben will walk through the packet that he has in front of you. But just take a moment to provide a few commentaries about what's going on at the hospital before we get into that. Financial report from last year is a very positive one. Our budget for next year is definitely more of an investment budget, so between our new building projects that we've added and then all of our new specialties that will be ramping up between new urology, rheumatology, dermatology, a second general surgeon, and another family practice physician, we've added a lot that we're gonna be ramping up here over, you know, the next two, three, four years. So you'll see that next year, I assume, when we come back to present. Really exciting day today. We're opening up the upper level of our two-story medical office building. So last Monday, we opened up the lower level, that is specialty, and this morning is primary care in the upper level, so probably one of the biggest milestones of our overall project. Obviously, that was the most visible from the exterior of everything that was going on. So with that opening, what we have left in our large building project is the renovation or remodel back into our surgery support space and two minor procedure rooms. That'll be done in the February-ish timeframe. And then we also have a small renovation that's happening in between the north and south end of the clinic or the new and existing that is staff support areas and that enhancement of the waiting room there. The board approved that change order, I don't know, six months ago or so at this point. And that will also take us to February, so come early in 2026, our transforming tomorrow's building project will be done. That'll be nice for many, many reasons. Feels like we've been at that pretty much my whole time here, because we have. So anyway, a lot, lot going on at WinMed, but Ben will kind of walk through the financials as we do every year, so.
Question.
Yeah.
The, this onstage-offstage approach that you're taking in your, in your general practice area is that is very innovative from seeing, seeing what you may want to explain that, but is anyone else taking that first, that kind of approach? It's really remarkable.
Yes, so the new University of Iowa Hospital, North Liberty, has some onstage-offstage elements to it. So you're definitely seeing that in some, but not all, of new healthcare facilities that are being built. Kind of pioneered off the Disney model, which the whole point is if you are onstage, then you're only seeing the Mickey Mouse with his head on and everything as it should be, and everything that's happening offstage is away from the public. But in our prior state, you know, patients that were coming in and going to an exam room were walking right past staff that may be on the phone talking about other patients to other patients or to each other, so you're walking right past the offstage hustle and bustle to get to your exam rooms, and that's no longer true. So now, patients have their own corridor that they are walking in and entering the exam room, and the team space is on the other side of that exam room, and each exam room has two doors, so team members and the physicians are coming in from the offstage area, patients are coming in from the onstage area. So we've only had our upper level open for, you know, two hours or whatever it is now. But that's really the number one feedback so far, is staff are just shocked at how quiet and calm the space is. And that was really the whole point of that onstage-offstage environment. So it does take more space and therefore more cost to make the onstage-offstage work, because you essentially have to add a hallway into every single, you know, exam room pod that you otherwise wouldn't, and then the two doors leading into the exam room, so it is a more expensive way to build a clinic, but it is better for patient privacy and better for the healing environment.
I would say, I don't know how many got to see their open house, but that was very impressive and very, the modernization, all of the core staff room and the rest of that and everything is and it's extremely well done. It's a real credit to the community. I, I hope the people that are, that see this recording will realize, you know, the gift that's been is an improvement to our medical delivery.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, we've been happy, happy with it thus far. We'll see what the patient feedback is, you know, here over the first few weeks, but so far, so good.
Great. Okay, we'll go through the boring part. Finance today, I think. So that's the fun. That is the fun part for me, so, yeah. Financial considerations, I kind of put this out there as kind of a disclaimer, you know, we've got a lot of things going on. The IFRS impact that you guys see, that's kind of a non-cash item, but it affects your income statement, it's still there. That was about $1.4 million this last year. But one of the special programs that came on two years ago, two years ago, Medicaid direct payment program, we talked about that last year. And that was a program to really reimburse the Medicaid population commercial paying rate. And so that provided an additional benefit of $5 million. That was a new program two years ago, so last year I think it was about 4.3 million. This year, that five, it is not approved at this point right now yet. Government shutdown one, and the second one is our application, you have to submit every two years, has not been fully approved, so.
So let's spend maybe a moment on Medicaid direct payment program, so most states have a state-directed Medicaid direct payment program. Iowa did not until two years ago, where the state of Iowa applied for that and ultimately was approved by CMS to do that. Iowa's actually on the low end, so a lot of states are getting much more dollars per facility than what Iowa is, but certainly has been referenced, still a significant pickup for us. That program has to be reapproved by CMS every year, and there are quality metrics tied in for the Medicaid population that we have to adhere to and work to improve as a result of having that program. So every year, we kind of wait and see if that approval is, is reached, and certainly expect and are optimistic that it will be. But even with that year-over-year approval, the changes in the one big beautiful bill act will slowly start ratcheting down the state-directed payment programs under, over a number of years until at about twenty, like thirty-two, I believe. The benefit will be maybe one-third of what the benefit is today, but that'll happen gradually year over year. So we are expecting that while it's great today, while we expect it to continue to be approved year over year, that number will start getting less and less unless some other big, you know, legislative changes happen over the course of the years to 2032, so knowing that that piece is gonna be on the downward slide, that part of that growth strategy financially is we need to keep generating larger and larger top operating margins and top operating revenues to eat up the additional cost increases that everybody's experiencing, and so growth is really our ticket to our financial success. Clearly, we're investing in that pretty significantly this year with the new services added that I referenced as well as the building project. Sorry.
You mentioned one time in one of your board meetings, or another, some other meeting about the, there's a difference in Medicare payments based on service delivery and the quality of service delivery and that WinMed ranks up at a higher level on that.
So that was home health and hospice specifically. I think that was part of Nancy's presentation, if I recall, where part of our reimbursement dollars there are indeed tied to quality metrics. So I can't remember the exact, you know, dollars and cents of that, but I believe that was part of Nancy's presentation, but that was specifically in the home health arena.
And you, and the hospital ranks in the upper regions of that because of service delivery.
That's right.
Next page, changing cash investments, so had a positive investment income this year, so three, $4.8 million additional capital brought on as a result of overall operations. You know, we can say that a lot of that was from the Medicaid direct payment program, but we did have a very strong operating year ago, too, to be able to kind of not clip that and just, you know, show some positives from there. You can see I highlighted the capital assets that we, you know, spent this last year, $28 million. That's not common for us. The last year was 5.9, the year before that was about 3.5, so we're almost done. We'll have another big year this next year that will be closer to that $20 million dollar amount, and then we'll hopefully be back down to kind of a regular routine operating capital, which will be about, you know, $4 million a year. So we'll probably have to continue investing in the organization to be able to keep things pristine and keep equipment coming, and surgeons have got new equipment that they're gonna need, and some of our stuff is, is a little bit on the older size. So we'll continue investing in the future there. Twenty-three million dollars in long-term debt as a result of, you know, the capital assets purchased, so. Next page shows you net patient service revenue increases, and this is, you know, the growth factor that we had this last year was right at about 10%. So 10% for small organizations, that's not a whole lot, but when you're talking $200 million, 10% is quite a bit of growth that we had this last year. Sustained through a lot of different activities. Surgery was busy, ER was busy, radiology and lab as a result of ER was, was busy. Family practice, overall, we just saw some really solid numbers this last year.
In our first full year of our retail pharmacy, too, as a brand new service line for us.
Yeah, it's been just patients walking out, driving through, and it's how quickly you're able to do, yeah, our volumes there are surpassing what, well, about what we thought they would, yeah, so. The clinic visiting, you can kind of see that six point, about seven percent increase in number of visits there, 65,000 will be, you know, in double digits by this next year compared to that. We've had some very strong numbers there, and so. Statement of operations overall, this is on the top side of our income statement. We've surpassed $100 million in total operating revenues this year, which is a big accomplishment for hospitals our size. I think it clearly puts us as the third largest credit class hospital in the state, third or fourth, depending on, yeah, right there, so. Something to be said about that. You can see I highlighted on the right the retail pharmacy, 2024, $1.6 million in revenue up to five points, almost 5.7 close, so we've seen some great things there. Pharmacist that's in charge there still says get close to maxing out on, on a lot of stuff that we can put through there, but like, we got, we got some different levers that we can pull to be able to kind of continue the efficiencies in the, in the service that they're delivering there, so. He's, he's pretty happy. Operating income, $3.6 million, showing a 3.5 margin there, so great things on the upper side. You can kind of see that if, you know, take an IFRS piece out of there, we would have been right around that $2.2 million of operating income, so that's still even positive cash flow, adding that depreciation back on gives us quite a bit of cash coming back in the door, and then that Medicaid direct payment as spoke, it's really a big benefit to the organization. Next one is kind of just a continuation of this, just shows you our non-operating side of things and gives you a total net position at the very end, so increase in net position about $7.3 million this last year. So even taking out Medicaid directed and IFRS piece, we're still at a positive total net impact to the whole organization of about a million dollars, so some great things there, strong to be able to kind of continue going forward in the future, and hopefully, you know, we'll have we'll have some different, you know, adjustments this next year. I think Steve kind of already talked about, you know, our board when we brought them to 2026 fiscal year budget, it was it, it was kind of a break-even type budget. We knew it would be with the amount of interest that we're gonna be paying out for the loans that we took out, along with just the ramp up of new physician services, so. But just being that we'll be able to, you know, come out of that in a couple of years, it'd be plenty strong. Next slide, days cash on hand, still sitting fine there, end of the year at about 115 days there. So still plenty fine there, and then long-term debt on the next page. Just kind of shows you a little bit, you know, before we started this project, we had about $150,000 in debt, and that was for very, very low interest, 0% and 1.5%, so there was no, no reason to pay that off too quickly. Our new debt after the transforming tomorrow is gonna kind of, when we're, when we're done with that, we'll have $4 million that we were awarded for the USDA red light loans, which was great to hear that in January of last year, so that's at 0% interest for, for 10 years. And then we've got some local bank loans, and then $35 million from the USDA is direct, kind of direct loans for a 30-year fixed rate at 3.5. Unless that rate falls below that 3.5 before we close, if it falls below that, we can close at a lower rate. It just won't go above that, so. I don't know, rates have kind of been fluctuating quite a bit lately, so on the positive side for us. And I just threw kind of a little bit of a, a last slide in here, just, you know, full transparency, challenges and successes, challenges, you know, we've, we've grown so much, so we're kind of at that growth curve that it's just taking a little bit more on the backend side of things now to kind of bring that cash back in the door from insurance companies and patient collections, so. We increased our bad debt quite a bit this last year, just from a collectability standpoint, so had to look at focusing a little bit more on that. Increase on collectability with insurance companies, they make it more difficult day in and day out to, you know, submit a bill and get paid for that, so that's always difficult, new physician specialties, ramp up Medicaid direct payment. At this point, it's not approved, we're not too nervous, that's not gonna be approved overall, but it's gonna continue ramping down in, in the future. Successes, you know, talked about transforming tomorrow, hopefully you all will be able to come to open house and and, and take a look at that, and if not, you know, feel free to reach out to Steve and myself, we'll, we'll walk you through that space individually. It's something to be very proud of from the community standpoint. Successfuls for the physician recruitment. We were awarded the top places to work in one of them in Iowa, so we went down to Des Moines three or four weeks ago and received that award, so that was great from the overall culture of the organization, but you know, and say that that's, you know, something that I'm pretty proud of, too. And then come November 5th, we have our first robotic assisted surgery with a DaVinci machine that was onsite at the beginning of October. And so one of the general surgeons that we were able to recruit did almost entirely all of his procedures with the DaVinci robot, so he'll be doing two that day and one the following day, so pretty exciting with that.
Your dermatologist is also using some robotics?
Not robotics, but he has a lot of different technology pieces, light therapy. There's a laser that we're gonna be getting and putting into operation, so a few different new technologies, but not necessarily robotic technologies. The DaVinci robot will be used by Dr. Brink and Dr. Winters out of the gate, both general surgeons, and then Dr. Schlicarath, LaBelle, Shirts will all get trained as well, so the general surgery group, both WinMed, Mayo, and Amplify will utilize that, and then our OB-GYN, Dr. Lopez, will also go through training on the DaVinci, so we'll have general surgery and OB-GYN rolling with that.
Questions on the finances?
I have a question on that Medicaid direct payment program. You said every state is different on the volatility. What's the factors that determine that?
Yeah, so states have to put together an application that they send in, and you can make different selections. Ben referenced that part of the goal of the program is to get the Medicaid reimbursement, which we haven't had an increase in Medicaid reimbursement in like 12 years in the state, to get that closer to commercial reimbursement rates. But the state submitting the application can select that percentage, so like, we're at 90% of commercial reimbursement rates, but we, the state could have submitted 100% of those rates. They could also, this is a little bit more convoluted, but they can also tax the organizations differently, so Medicaid is a state and federal jointly funded program, and so part of how the state-directed payment programs work is that the hospitals pay in, and that unlocks more federal dollars to come down, and the amount that we pay in as a percent is lower than a lot of the other state-directed payment programs, so it unlocks fewer federal dollars, that sort of makes sense. So there are a few different factors that make the Iowa one more conservative, or whatever you want to call it, than some of the other ones across the country, so it'll obviously hurt as that program keeps ramping down here, but it's gonna hurt in a lot of other states much more significantly.
Are you seeing lag time in your Medicaid payments for services?
Medicaid, Medicaid usually pays pretty well. It's just insurance companies, the Medicare Advantage plans are making it difficult to deny stuff with artificial intelligence now. Just trying to, you know, organizations, if you don't have the backend support, you can't, you know, fight those denials on time, and then they tend to expire, and then you don't get paid for it, so it's, it's been more difficult with that. I mean, Mayo and some other places have stopped taking Medicare Advantage, and sir, you guys saw some of those plans that are no longer gonna be offered up there, which are affecting some of the patients down here, but that's their choice to do that. We're still, you know, taking all the ones that we've always taken, but, you know, if they receive pa, you know, patients up there, they're gonna be out of network, so. It's, it's more difficult, it's trying to get more back towards that traditional Medicare program with the supplement rather than a Medicare Advantage program, so. Yeah, it's been more difficult to, to collect on money from insurance companies, for sure.
I know you mentioned one time that you were going to increase securing the co-pays when the patients came in at your front desk. Worth it, implement that. Is that gonna help with some of the debt?
Yeah.
Reduction.
I mean, that is good to be one thing. We're looking at that from the co-pay collections, you know, those are smaller dollar amounts. We're looking at it from, you know, OB-GYN patients that are coming in and give, you know, have a baby in nine months. About talking to those patients when they come to see the doctor the first time and give them six months to, you know, not be surprised about something, to pay off half their bill within six months, and then they've got a small, less responsibility after they walk out the door, and then also, you know, working with patients that have got, you know, they've got a surgery and it's, you know, in two months, working with those patients to get a little bit down before that, otherwise if, you know, there's a lot of statistics out there that show if they walk out the door without paying anything, the odds of them, you know, of us getting anything after the service is done is it, it narrows, so.
A lot of larger organizations are pretty aggressive on that, where you may need to pay off your whole bill before any of the elective procedures come. We're a lot more lenient right now. There's probably a middle ground to reach there for us.
It's a tough place to be.
Yeah. Yep, I mean, when you walk in to get a haircut, you usually pay one when you walk out, so it's, it's very similar to this, so, but a lot higher dollar amounts for sure, so. You know, we gotta make it reasonable that we don't ask 100% of it, but there's, there's something that we need to do a little bit differently, otherwise we'll just keep growing from a revenue side, but not have the cash to be able to support that operational side, so.
And the number of, the number of employees that WinMed has on staff, what's your total, what would be your total account?
Oh, 650, if you add in the WinMed employee plus the Mayo physicians that are full-time here under contract, we're about 650 now.
Significant employers.
Yep. Yep, for sure.
Other things we can answer about hospital, any other commentary, Justin, from your perspective? Nice job.
I'll take it.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thanks for having us.
I have, for you guys, I have their complete audit. We keep our files, so I need to accept the file action.
Please to accept and file the.
Motion in a second to accept and file if you like. All those in favor? Those both same sign. Morning, guys.
Good morning. It's two-sided. I'm sure Michael had just as positive a record as WinMed just had, right? Increase, increase in services and more money and everything, just like they, all of the construction.
That is always my goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. Let's read the report. Maybe on a smaller scale, we don't have 600 employees. Push, but.
Probably glad you don't have 600.
Well, especially after the last two weeks. Are we getting that HR director? I'm looking at Steve when I'm saying that. Anyway.
He's looking at the table.
Well, yeah, just keep some sanity on my end. But anyway. Just go through this real quick. Bill Grant, nothing new this week. I don't know if I mentioned this last week, but I did have a conversation with the DOT and, and looking at January for more information on that. Railroad flat car, I talked to ISU this week. Expect results in December. Subdivision, there's nothing new this week. Pory Hill. Brewing is now once a formal agreement prior to commencement of the project. Pory Hill, uh, brewing is now once a formal agreement prior to commencement of the project. Don't really want to expand on that too much, but, uh, that's not unreasonable. Um. Nesty Valley, uh, nothing new this week. I. Will be working with Barb to see if, if, um, we can. If she thinks it's covered. Uh, cause I'd like to.
It only looks like.
Close down.
Patched that haven't terminated.
Exactly.
That one in kind of the. Eastern quadrant down below where the, where the road.
Southern quadrant there.
Is that one? Was that the land that we disturbed or was that other work that was done for the?
So that was, that was the area where we cut out the hill. We kind of feathered material back in to that area. Uh. So that is ours. It was reseeded. For something small like that, uh. I had reached out to Barb, uh, to see if we could, could mulch some things, uh. If that's not taking off or mulch it and, and then close out the project that way. So I am aware of it.
Need like seventy percent cover or something.
Correct.
Before you can just close out the project.
Correct. Culvert work, um, they're, they're moving, they're about ready to put, uh, they're ready to put the pipe in the ground for W of forty. They got the four, the four culverts installed. We're gonna, what's left, that's, that's rock out on eight fourteen is going to be. Um, asphalt patch for our crew and that's just a temporary patch. You will look next year to pull out that asphalt and concrete patch it next year. Uh, Dura Patcher, uh, same as last week, didn't move from Locust Road, um, between the weather and everything else, didn't, they didn't finish everything that they. Uh, wanted to in the local shop. Uh, Bridge two eighty backfill operations will continue this week. Uh, good news is, is Bloomings is, is. Has verbally told tech that, uh, they're looking to pave the road as always this week, uh, hopefully later than next week. And shifting around things to get this project done. So I want to thank Marines for, for working with us on that. Bridge one twenty-six, uh, the need for clearances have been completed and will likely be let in January. Frankville Road, same as last week, it will follow. Bridge one twenty-six.
Did you, on, on Frankville Road, there was a, I got a request from a. Property owner with a drive on that. I don't have, I'll give you the word afterwards, but it was line of sight issue with threes and ditch. Uh, on coming, on coming tail. So it's, it's kind of a safety issue getting out there with being able to see oncoming traffic.
I'm just going to make enough to talk to you. Um, Vogel, the, the. Paint strippers, uh, they were the lowest, uh. Procure for B thirty two and three fifty eighth street. Um, we're looking at getting that worked on today. Um, one of the things that we did last week. Uh, Bargain Incorporated showed a mastic demonstration for crack filling on Big Canoe Road near Bear Creek Road. And then also on River Road just north of the old stage road on Tuesday. I encourage. All of board members to go swing by the shop and, and, and look at that mastic. It is. A wildlife, uh, crack filling, uh, uh, operation and, and. I'm considering, uh, doing pole line road next year with this. So you're interested in checking that out, uh, the. Just north of, of the shop or in Freeport would be something I'd encourage you to go check out. Um, notified today, this pre-notified Friday of last week that we are going to need a new sign man in the near future. Two weeks was sent in today. And then that person just started. Yes. And this is. Uh, it's a kind of a deal where. Talking to other county, they think that, um, Daya County has still got an open position that they haven't been able to fill. I know that Howard County is having trouble thing, uh, and for two blade operators. So. Um, the, the sign man, you know, better pay, we're fighting, we're fighting. Pay, pay, pay and. It's just.
We interviewed him for recycling, had a similar situation with that individual.
So. And then three hundred tenth and two hundred eighty-eight avenue, traffic engineering study was submitted on Thursday. I don't know if you had a chance to read that. There was nothing, uh. Real fun about that. Um, it's just pretty boring, but, uh, it was necessary. And then with that, uh. Maybe we can vote on the resolution that I just passed on to Dan. Oh yes, forklift truck. Yeah, that was. A prior, uh, arrangement, um, a couple of years ago, uh, forklift truck was transferred from recycling to secondary roads. It happened three weeks ago. I didn't know about it. Um, it was very handy and loading quarry this past week. Um, but, but, uh, everyone is, everyone at the maintenance shop, yeah, like Seth. As does the superintendent.
Yeah, we did. We were, we replaced forklift truck or have ordered one to be replaced with electric rather than using that gas. Inside the combined environment. It's going to clean things up a lot that way. This. Rather than putting it in for the trade in, it was much better to transfer to the road department was the decision.
We got about a nickel for trading.
We were not going to lose it and not.
It was a benefit. Chain. It just, it was the only thing we had. So it's going to stay. Yeah. He said it stays in the maintenance shop area. So, you know. So I walked in and said, what is this?
Gift.
Yeah.
Oh, surprise.
Yeah, it was. Okay.
Well, recycle will say, you owe me one.
Oh, but yeah, I think that was the agreement between, uh, Scott and Jeff. Years back. So. Glad to have it. It's, it's a good price for us and. No charge. So. Happy is already made it, already made a, made it beneficial. So. Yeah, that, that's the, that's the report, um, the engineering study. I mentioned that in the, on the backside of the resolution. So, um, that, that I will sign after, after the resolution. It's been. Well, the number of line items here seems to have gone down. Um, it has been a. Pretty grindy two weeks. So. I can tell you that.
It's nice when winter's coming.
Well, it's, and it's even outside of when typical winter stuff. So it's personnel, it's a lot of things. So.
Would anyone like to take action on this stop sign for three hundred tenth and two hundred?
Making a four way stop.
Yeah.
I'm two way.
Yes.
I have motion to approve.
Certainly. We have a motion in a second to approve the stop sign resolution for the intersection of three hundred tenth street and two hundred eighty-eight avenue. This is a resolution.
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
I'll. Anyone have anything else for Mike?
Outside of rows of safety committee, I wouldn't mind talking to. Charlie and Steve after important meetings. So, you know, stop in the office. Sounds good.
Oh, and just to give your information, that road is completely open now. In Oshin there, where they finished paving.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they opened it up last Wednesday. So both lanes are open now.
The big dip.
The dip is gone.
But it's good to hear. I haven't, because everything else is gone.
And somewhere along the line, something got crossed. Where we were not going to have any curb and gutter. We got curb and gutter.
She was driving away. Um. Same price, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause I looked and I go, uh.
And we have twenty-two foot per, uh, gutter, they got a line. So.
Yeah.
All right. Then we're fine.
We're good.
Good.
All right. Well, thanks, Mike. Thank you. Uh, consent agenda?
Got minutes in the quick.
We're going to approve the consent agenda.
Second to approve the consent agenda. All who was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was polls, same signs. Motion passed. Any committee reports?
Uh, workforce development board, uh, meeting this week. Nothing new to report. This is just quarterly meeting coming in.
I've had Northeast Tower of Behavior Health last week. Um, making, making some cuts there just to be able to move. Meet the reduction in. Money coming, money making. Same old thing. And then this week I've got community action, Upper Explorer Land, World Conservation and Development. Busy week.
I had juvenile detention. Last week on Friday. Kind of the same thing with everybody, kind of going through the reorganization, funding issues, but so far maintaining.
And Mark and I had a committee meeting for, you know, our subcommittee meeting with recycle this week and things are, things are going well there. Uh, we talked about equipment rotation and further maintenance issues and then some planning for the budgeting for this coming year. Did make a suggestion that they consider. We had two, our, our two roll off trucks were about same year. They're both. Becoming some maintenance issues and so forth. So we thought about. We had a budget. For a truck replacement to this year's. In this year's budget and going ahead with that. I think it's wise so we can get, even though these are twenty twenties, we should have longer life. We get a better trade in. If we go ahead and get into a rotation with the equipment. So. That we asked Jeff to get some, get some prices. Anything else on that you want to add, Mark?
No, then, uh, in regard to the forklift, we are moving ahead and getting a new forklift and replacing two. Uh, electric one that was worn out and unsafe and didn't hold the charge and. Actually the fire hazard and then this, uh, the gas one that was. Not great, but it's fine for what they're using for.
I think we did one new forklift last year.
We did.
With two good lifts. We'll probably, we may. They need to look at, uh, replacement that's good steer, that's in there that's used for on the floor. But that's another, we had, we're still dealing with old deferred maintenance issues that were not properly.
You're not going to catch up overnight?
No.
No.
But it's where we're, there's good morale and, and, uh. And very positive things happening.
And, and another increase in, uh. Recycling bottles and, uh. And how we did things through the redemption center and come back and kind of go back and forth. So it's been a nice increase in revenue. About changing a whole lot of what happens.
We both, we all got these, um. Economic impact of tourism reports from Oshin County Development and she is on. And I put it on the bound if anybody wants. I think that's a type, well, it's not billion. It's, uh. Seven point five million dollar visitor spending. Forty-five point seven million direct visitor spending for the state of Iowa. These are really great reports and, and, uh. Show how much we depend on tourism spending as a county and as a state. Um, it went down a little bit. On the direct visitor spending to the state of Iowa. So. See how that goes into the future, but this is good money coming in.
We do.
Oh, I do have a hawk meeting today.
And I did receive a message from Krista that advisory committee. Did have their first meeting. So. See that goes into planning. She said quarterly, but I would encourage maybe a little more frequent that.
Uh, that we weren't, our motion, the motion that we directed their board was not for quarterly meetings to get around to it by twenty thirty. The, I, I, I did ask Maddie specifically for. Some translation of those state numbers on tourism and so forth and impact to. What would be her estimate for how it impacted us as a county for the effort city? The numbers that she gave me over in an email was. And the recreation one point two billion in the state of Iowa are impact in Winnebago County with seven million. And transportation, one point nine, our impact was twelve point one million. The food and beverage state was one point seven. We were ten million. The lodging, uh, one point four billion, we were nine point three million. And retail state was one point two billion. We were six point nine million. The. Our concern, we should, I'm thinking, uh, large majority of that is not affecting. Anything other than the, the immediate decor area, lodging certainly, uh. But most of the restaurant re, and retail business is likewise. We're, we're going to be faced down the road with, what are we going to do with the rest of our county for economic development within more of that? So that it doesn't just continue to decline and we lose, and we've been continuing to see year after year, decade after decade, decline of population. We're not going to, we're not going to reverse that if we don't, if we don't look on how can we expand more? What can we do? Where's our housing? Where's our, what's going to be attracting? Business and so forth. So we're not just commuter county. So that's just something to throw out there to think about. You know, there's no lodging, there's no economic impact to. From the, uh, lost. Or from the, uh, the hotel motel tax, because that's, you know, that's city specific. We don't have any other.
They're looking at potentially, there's a way you can expand to greater county. Collect hotel motel tax. It's there. I don't believe.
Well, that has to be, I think, according to family. That's a valid issue. It has to be adopted by every city itself. So you'd have to have even Jackson Junction, and I don't think they're going to be. Looking to add a hotel motel tax in Jackson Junction.
If you want. I mean, no.
So I think the impact, there's so little, uh, there's so little lodging outside of decor, unfortunately. There's a, just a few minor Airbnbs. The majority of all the Airbnb's and ERBOs and so forth is all within, you know, the, the region.
Quite. We actually are. North and south fishing country.
A few, there's a few out there. A little bit in the south. There's, there's one in, one in Spilledville.
Highlandville.
Uh, none in.
Doesn't come anywhere close to the, the hundred sixty.
No, I've been within the city.
Yeah, no.
So no, that, so you know, most, so a lot of the economic impact, if you look, if you just take lodging. The, all of that, uh, nine point three million is basically. And generated here only. It's not coming because they don't have hotel motel tax in the other, in the other areas. So it would be a small impact. So food and beverage, there's not that many restaurants outside, unfortunately, uh.
But if they're in a rural area, not in an incorporated community. Shouldn't we, uh. They'll be able to collect hotel motel tax on that.
After. We'd have to.
Surround incorporated area.
I think you would have to pass it to the county rural. Now, at the same time, I think some of the specific vendors like Airbnb. Force their, their people to collect it, whether they're supposed to or not. And I think if you're in a rural area, Airbnb makes you collect hotel motel tax, even if all.
What happens to that then?
It goes to the city decor, because they're the only one in the community that has it. It's based on. This is what Seth from, somebody sent me a round set when she was here one time, because I think she had an Airbnb. It's in the rural area, but because it's a five two one oh one zip code. They associate it with decor as hotel motel. They associate it with decoras, hotel motel tax, so they force her to collect it and it goes to the.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want the rural community members to think that all of what our economic development. Budget is for is just for decor and not for them, so we, we, to avoid. The optics of it, we, we need to take a, a look at what we can do.
Cause they did like Maddie did the promotional videos for.
But that's, those are one-shot, those are just. And they lose their, they lose.
Sales tax is divided up, so even if most of it is collected in decor area, it's still divided up based on population and. Valuation to all eight cities get a share and the county gets the share for the rural area.
We just want the people to understand that and what are the options that we can do better for the county.
Because there is a belief out there that. That money all goes to the city and decor.
But it provides jobs for.
That's not entire county. Totally true. All right, next item on the agenda, miscellaneous, uh, community services building discussion?
Did you want to do Andy and come back?
Yeah. It's his time.
Over there just listening for a while instead of.
I know. Dealing with Monday morning, sorry. I completely understand.
Didn't make a, I didn't make a committee report on the court courtroom, the last few minor little details are being done today, mounting a couple of stools. Putting a few trim moldings on, everything there is done with the exception of the state, uh, coming back in and collecting the electronics. And that's out of our control, but everything else is complete.
That's good.
That's improvement. You can have ribbon cutting with cake and coffee.
Of course.
You planning that?
Do you have anything for us this morning?
Um, I don't, I, well. Little update, um. Received a response a week or two ago from, uh, Public Information Board to our. Open records policy, they had a couple of suggestions, I revised that over the weekend and sent it to them to look at. And hopefully we can address that the next week or two and get that behind us. Their comment was, uh, look, this SMS from the delay, don't worry about the sixty days.
About the lawsuit in the dripless water defenders?
Went to ISAC for assignment for defense and. And I think the one, did they appeal the, or just one, I think. The dismissal. It's years, and I lose track, there's too many going on all the time.
Well, the original one on board supervisors was thrown out.
I have nothing else.
Thanks, sir.
I'll shoot you an email, Andy, on if you've got any progress on that one, on the, on the discussion we had.
And well, that miscellaneous community services building discussion.
Yeah, Mark asked me to put this on my, so it had to do with some kind of. Maybe one of you knows something, adding a wall or moving a wall or something to change the.
Oh, I think the, I don't know if that's it, but I know, uh, the food pantry would like to. At the entrance there, there was a raised garden bed that was rotten and that was removed and there's grass there and they would like to fill that in with cement. Just for. They would pay for the cement, it, it just, our approval to be able to do that.
Is that in the area over alongside where the canopy comes in?
Yeah, there's, but it's about a. Five, six, six foot wide maybe strip of grass, but it kind of protrudes out, and when we unload trucks, they're cutting over to the. Garage storage area, cause they use that for pole storage and things. And it's just really cumbersome to have that grass there and.
We get, uh, Mike Schenick out there to specifically locate where the, where those property corners are so that we're not.
Well, this would be inside. Towards spectrums. You know, they've got a roll of air conditioners there.
There's two, I thought it was over.
No, no, believe that.
That one gets a little.
No.
Close.
So basically, it's, it's no expense to us, it's just makes it a lot cleaner and actually better drainage for water. Just flat, yeah, just flat work, so.
No, I don't know, I think, I don't think we need a motion or anything, I think it's just hard to go ahead with.
Guys, they said they take care of the cost, it's just gonna make things a lot easier for, uh, them and for storing some things.
The ongoing water saga has not been, not been completely mitigated yet, but, uh, they did, between John and. And so forth, they brought out, they tried to shut off the water and that doesn't appear to be. The valve doesn't appear to be turning by the meter inside the building or something is going awry there, but they did. So they called the city to come out and turn off the curb stop.
And I didn't turn off either.
And I didn't turn off either, and they wouldn't, they couldn't turn it. They couldn't turn the curb stop. So they wanted, they wanted Chuck or, or, uh. Or John to turn the curb stop, he said, that's your curb stop, we're not, no, if you, if something happens to that, that's yours, no, no, that curb stop is yours.
The city won't do it, now you have to plumber.
What I'm, my, I've never seen a city on, in our county where the curb stop, the curb stop. Let's take Spillville for example, the curb stop was installed by the city and that's city property. That curb stop that's there was installed by the city. I don't understand why.
Well, Oshin, you maintain the line from the curb stop.
Every city that I've ever known, you are responsible for the line from the curb stop to.
Say no one installed, had to put a shut-off bell, people stole the meter. The plumber had to, the city won't shut it off, it, cause it breaks, it's yours, you have to replace it.
Wonder what are, what's our options there, cause that doesn't, that seems absolutely wrong.
Well. Here, take your chances and have a plumber come do it, or go down and get the, even go get the key yourself and do it.
I'm not, I've, I've been to the chiropractor for doing.
I know that, uh, David Botsworth did take the meter. Back to the city that was out. In his, so I don't know, wow, this is transpiring, good. I thought he can take the meter off, obviously the water shut off.
Well, that's a, gotta be a different, different curb stop, cause it's, it's gotta be a different service.
Yeah, meter zone.
There must, there must be a shut-off, had a meter, was able to take the meter down to the water department. He didn't know it was there, obviously, until he was made aware of it.
So ongoing saga continues.
Did you ever find out who's paying the bill on that meter?
We have one bell that we pay and it's gets to be an op, uh, I mean, the amount we pay there is about half again as much as what it is with courthouse, so.
Something's awry.
So we, I don't know who's all, that's what hopefully they're still figuring out if we're paying.
The other building between us and Botsworth could be.
Could be on ours too.
Yeah, that, that was all.
Was one building.
Corporately owned by the, uh. Spectrum at a, at a point, all the way down to was was building, so.
Well, and they also had the kitchen at one time, so.
I know.
Was that meter installed just to see how much water usage was used outside? So that could be, so you didn't have to pay the sewer rate on the water.
They had a community garden down there was the understanding.
Yeah, so I'm sure there's a valve before that meter.
Well, they busted it because he took the meter off.
Yeah, but that doesn't, there's still the possibility that we were paying water for all the buildings.
From the one meter that we have in this, in our portion of the spectrum building, that is. Because remember, that building is connected to the, to the, to the gym next door, there's a, there's a section of common wall that creates the property line. So these, it would seem reasonable that that was all, may have all been plumbed together, if so, we've been. Or that's been, they've been getting a free ride.
Yeah. Well, the city should know if there's an account for that particular enterprise.
It doesn't appear that they have the most current information.
Okay, and so I guess I don't know what other, cause I'm sure Mark said something about a wall that they were.
The, I don't believe that the.
Maybe it was this outside thing.
I think it is an outside thing because Matt talked to me about that.
Mentioned something about a building to me, but he wasn't real clear on, you know.
Cause.
If he needs, if there's something else we need to discuss, he can let me know next week.
I volunteer on Tuesdays down there and Matt talked to me about. Should we, he get approval to fill that in, I, I said probably so since it's a county property, but it actually is a plus for the county to have that filled in. And they would pay for the cost of the cement, so. So, but that, I don't think they at the moment want or need to move a wall at all.
Yeah, cause if there's any changes like that, we need to know.
Yeah, and that's what I, that's why he wanted it on the agenda.
No, but it's just.
We can get more of an update next week and we're obviously maybe find out more water meat back there.
Yeah, we did know that they, he was said, there was a com- there's a common lunchroom.
Yeah.
And that, that doesn't appear to be a common lunchroom, the way it's being used, uh, so we may need to look at that, DHS.
Has their own break.
Has, is using part of that space, and again, it's very limited use period in the whole, in the entire space. According to Chuck, he usually sees maybe three people there.
I'll just put CSP discussion on next week and that way we, if you find out more on the. Water, you can update, plus if there's any other. Things that Mark Big wanted to bring up, and he wasn't here to bring up.
I said, Mark, I'd, I'd ask Mark about that break area and, uh, Mark says that the food pantry doesn't use that, so the only one.
They can't.
Using that.
Is spectrum.
Spectrum.
They'd have to go. From that partition wall with the sliding doors in the spectrum to get over.
And, you know, it's being used by spectrum, both the small kitchen emphasis in their space, plus that is being used, I understand, to prepare the meals and snacks for their patrons. So, and there's. So we, we really probably need to be looking at it as just spectrum space and not. Utilized by any other tenants, we may not wanna really consider that as, you know, common area.
I know the only thing. Food pantry talked about if they could get an office, cause they, they're short of office space. They have a desk set up behind storage shelves right now, corner, but. They would pay for the additional square footage, but.
Maybe that's what, maybe that's this wall or something that.
I don't think so.
No, that one wouldn't, that would work, they'd have to take it out of the, the main proper space or.
But I think it's a lot of. Spaces not utilized. To its extent that it could be.
Definitely.
Looked at it, we could reconfigure a few things if we needed to make an office or a. Conference room or another office.
We've got that small conference room that we've, you know, at one point in time, I talked about putting on a, a schedule like we do the annex. And I'll, I'll have a conversation with, with John Lukey about that, to see if we can actually do that, so it's really also available as a county space. With the ability to, to have a, a Zoom meeting, like we need a personal committee meeting or anything like that. There's times when our auditor wants to use this building and he's really, he's really, uh, kind of one way about not having anybody else in.
He could have, he could have boarding down there.
What's on the meetings down there?
All right, does anyone have anything else for this morning's meeting?
I'll do a brutal turn.
Motion in second for German, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, but Jack Junction. That railroad history book, you know, it has a section on Jackson Junction.
How many board members?
No, three. Actually four, Charlie in the restroom.
Underlined, somebody was killed. It's a big time deal, it was, it almost took off, a really big.
We definitely had map house.
Yeah, it's as big as decor on the map, city limits. Yeah. Yeah, there was a, one of the guys was killed in the brawl, he took clubs and.
That's right, yeah.
The concrete monument out here in.
I think I say that's a nice bench out there.
Well, that is, uh, since Homeland Security wanted, you know, collision, uh. Protection for us here with some dollars out there, Michael to bring over that piece of barrier. Well, own yard. Zero dollars.
Okay, path of mine.